Bring work session to order and have a, Madam.
Pledge.
Clerk, could you take the roll call, please?
Certainly.
Do the pledge.
Yes, let's do that first. I'm just following directions here.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Why you at that?
Okay, got it done.
Madam Clerk, could you take the roll call, please?
Supervisor Moore is not with us today. Councilman McNamara?
Here.
Councilman Iasili?
Here.
Councilman Pell?
Here.
Councilman Martel?
Here.
Supervisor away for today. And before we go into agenda review, I'd like to make a small statement. I spoke with the supervisor, excuse me, I spoke to the supervisor of highways last night, while not assigned the duties of picking up the garbage and the cans and the different hamlets. He has agreed to continue to maintain the garbage cans previously removed pending a further discussion with the town board on funding. So, we're going to have during our budget process, we're going to find the funding to do this. So, that's it.
Say thank you, Bill.
Hi.
Hello.
I just wanted to say thank you, Bill, for your, for your working on this.
We all did, was it not me, was the whole town board? I don't like to take credit for something, but it was all, you know, Marie was not here, but she had an input on it, too. All of us worked together to get this, to get this done.
Good morning. Just very quickly, I'm Stella Flame. I'm the president of the Bridgehampton Sagaponic Chamber of Commerce. And on behalf of the chamber, the residents, the stakeholders in Bridgehampton Watermill Sagaponic, we thank the board for facilitating getting the service back to us. So, we appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
So, we're going to start the draft agenda. Approvals. Special town board meeting September 9. You want, you going to read or just skip over?
Do you want me?
Can you just read the public hearings, Bill?
Just read the public hearings.
Okay, I'll read them for you. The public hearing number one, to consider the acquisition of property located at 1232 North Sea Road in the hamlet of North Sea. Public hearing number two, to consider historic landmark designation of the site recognized as the Nathan Topping Cook Family Home located at 439 Hay Ground Road, Bridgehampton.
Permission to proceed, Bill?
Yes.
Okay. Town Board Resolution 2025-1030, co-sponsored with council members Martel and Pell. This is to authorize the use of CHF funding for the acquisition of three lots located at 47 Flanders Road Riverside for affordable housing apartment units.
Town Board?
Sorry.
Town Board Resolution ID 50905, co-sponsored with Supervisor Moore. Authorized purchases of supply and delivery of auto parts with Advanced Stores Company doing business as Advanced Auto Parts. Grade A Petroleum, Fleet Pride Inc., and Morgan Auto Supply Inc. using East Hampton contract.
Town Board Resolution ID 50908, sponsored by Supervisor Moore. Authorized Supervisor to execute a service agreement with Source Pass Contemporary LLC. Town Board Resolution ID 50909, also Supervisor Moore. Authorized Supervisor to renew the purchase of network hardware and software maintenance from Source Pass Contemporary LLC. Town Board Resolution ID 50848, sponsored by Supervisor Moore. Authorized Supervisor to enter into a contract amendment with Hay Duck Engineering LLC for municipal engineering consulting services. Town Board Resolution 50914, sponsored by Supervisor Moore. Authorized Supervisor to execute a contract amendment with Daniel R. Filasco, P E P C, as it relates to the Fire Island Inlet to Montauk Point FIP project. Town Board Resolution ID 50880, sponsored by Supervisor Moore. Authorized Supervisor to sign a contract with the Rayner Group P E and L S P L L C for surveying and preparation of an official map in connection with the Riverside Sewer District.
Town Board Resolution ID 50911, co-sponsored with Supervisor Moore. Authorized Supervisor to sign a sole source contract with International Code Council I C C for building code books and digital codes.
Town Board Resolution ID 50928, sponsored by Supervisor Moore. Authorized Supervisor to sign agreements with surveying firms for the Fire Island Inlet to Montauk Point FIP project.
Town Board Resolution ID 50824, award and authorize the purchase of one 2025 Ford Ranger Super Crew from Otis Ford Inc. using New York State O G S contract for vehicles class one through eight statewide.
Town Board Resolution ID 50913, sponsored by Supervisor Moore. Declare item surplus and authorize disposal of vehicles. Town Board Resolution ID 50857, sponsored by Supervisor Moore. Declare item surplus and authorize disposal of vehicles and equipment.
Town Board Resolution ID 50871, co-sponsored with Supervisor Moore. Recall and rescind Town Board Resolution 2025-1009, award and authorize the purchase of one 2025 Ford F 250 Super Duty from Nielsen Ford of Moorestown Inc. using New York State O G S contract for vehicles class one through eight statewide.
Town Board Resolution ID 50912, sponsored by Supervisor Moore. Recall and amend Town Board Resolution 2025-571. Authorized Supervisor to execute a contract with Corey Humphrey to provide part-time program coordinator services for the iconic estuary program. Town Board Resolution 50864, sponsored by Supervisor Moore. Notice to bidders for used Ford Transit Connect Cargo Van for Animal Control.
Town Board Resolution ID 50840, 2025 Notice to Bidders for Activity Vehicles.
Town Board Resolution ID 50907, sponsored by Supervisor Moore. Accept P S E G rebate and amend 2025 capital budget for sustainable infrastructure project. Town Board Resolution ID Number 50924, sponsored by Supervisor Moore. Amend the 2025 budget for various departments. Town Board Resolution ID 50906, sponsored by Supervisor Moore. Authorize closure of capital project. Town Board Resolution ID 50925, sponsored by Supervisor Moore. Deposit money into escrow account for professional services in connection with the Watermill Building Supply Incorporated Site Plan Application. Town Board Resolution ID 50882, resolution of adoption amending Town Code Chapter 64 Term Limits to eliminate term limits for zoning board and planning board members. Town Board Resolution ID 50885, sponsored by Supervisor Moore. Resolution of adoption amending Town Code Chapter 330-163, Organization and General Procedure of Zoning Board and Appeals, and Chapter 330-181, Organization of Planning Board to reduce the term of zoning board and planning board members from seven to four years.
Town Board Resolution ID 50890, co-sponsored with Councilman Iasili. Authorization of road closures and cost reimbursement waiver for San Gennaro Feast of the Hamptons to be held September 13th to September 14th, 2025, from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. with rain dates of September 27th to September 28th, 2025. Could we just change the title of that to Held On instead of To Be Held? Thank you.
Town Board Resolution ID 50891, sponsored by Supervisor Moore. Authorize iconic bay region community preservation fund tax refund pursuant to the first time home buyer's exemption for Riley Messiah Lucero.
Could I be added to that?
Yes, actually, please.
Yes.
Okay, Town Board Resolution 50881, historic landmark designation of the site recognized as Nathan Topping Cook Family Home located at 439 Hay Ground Road, Bridgehampton, also sponsored by Supervisor Moore.
Could I be added to that, Sunday?
Town Board Resolution 50915, this is a memorializing resolution in support of commitment to civility in honor of Charlie Kirk and Melissa Hortman.
Would like to be added to that, please.
Thank you, Regent. I will make some comments during the town board meeting. Thank you.
Could you add me, too, please?
Okay, Town Board Resolution 50898, sponsored by Supervisor Moore. The 2025 Part-Time Salaries. Town Board Resolution ID 50897, sponsored by Supervisor Moore. Accept resignation of Christine Mortis, Senior Office Assistant in the Building Department. Town Board Resolution ID 50830, sponsored by Supervisor Moore. Accept resignation of Claire Vega, Office Assistant in the Justice Court. Town Board Resolution ID 50930, sponsored by Supervisor Moore. Appoint Mitchell Lester to Automotive Mechanic Two in Central Garage. Town Board Resolution ID 50901, sponsored by Supervisor Moore. Appoint Nicole Gensel to Principal Legal Secretary position from the Civil Service List. Town Board Resolution ID 50903, sponsored by Supervisor Moore. Appoint Tristan Allen to Automotive Equipment Operator in Waste Management. Town Board Resolution 50940, sponsored by Supervisor Moore. Remove employee from payroll for suspended license. Town Board Resolution 50895, sponsored by Supervisor Moore. Councilpeople McNamara and Martel. Notice of public hearing to consider the acquisition of 31 Quantuck Bay Lane in the Hamlet of Quaiog and amend C P F project plan and the C P F management and stewardship plan to include the property. Town Board Resolution 50896, sponsored by Supervisor Moore. Councilpeople McNamara and Martel. Notice of public hearing to consider the acquisition of 33 Quantuck Bay Lane in the Hamlet of Quaiog and amend C P F project plan and the C P F management and stewardship plan to include the property. Town Board Resolution 50899, sponsored by Supervisor Moore. Councilpeople McNamara and Martel. Notice of public hearing to consider the acquisition of 35 Quantuck Bay Lane in the Hamlet of Quaiog and amend C P F stewardship plan and the C P F management and stewardship plan to include the property. Town Board Resolution 50900, sponsored by Supervisor Moore. Councilpeople McNamara and Martel. Notice of public hearing to consider the acquisition of 189 Dune Road in the Village of Quog and amend the C P F management and stewardship plan to include the property.
Could you add me that?
Town Board Resolution ID 50847, sponsored by Supervisor Moore. Notice of public hearing to consider historic landmark designation of the site recognized as the Austin Tuttle Family House located at 149 South Country Road, Remsenberg Spion. Town Board Resolution ID 50883, sponsored by Supervisor Moore. Notice of public hearing to consider historic landmark designation of the site recognized as the Herman Ellsworth Terrill House located at 11 Walnut Avenue, East Quogue.
Town Board Resolution ID, oh, could I be added to that Walnut, one Sunday? Say that again? Walnut Avenue, East Quogue, could I be added?
Town Board Resolution ID 50816, resolution authorizing the purchase of 1232 North Sea Road in the Hamlet of North Sea, Town of Southampton.
Town Board Resolution ID 50887, sponsored by Supervisor Moore. Road review application for 142 Shore Road LLC Suffolk Tax Map, as stated, situated at North Sea is accepted. Town Board Resolution 50886, sponsored by Supervisor Moore. Review, road review application for Lisztet Garosia, James Garosia and Alfred Tsioskiya, Suffolk Tax Map, 900, 332, 38.1, situated West Hampton is accepted.
And Madam Clerk, if I could just be added to Town Board Resolution 50891, page 30? Thank you.
So, on the add-ons, we have number 1, 50122, sponsored by the entire town board. Authorize the acquisition of 11 Helen's Lane in the Hamlet of North Sea, New York, and amend the C P F management stewardship plan to include the property.
We also have 50844 with Councilman Pell. Notice of public hearing to consider amending Section 123-11, effective period of building permit to include and quote "applicable limitations."
While we're having this conversation, I did, I did read it, and I wholly support letter E. I just had questions about letter D. It just seems very open to interpretation, and it's basically at the discretion of the building inspector on pretty much any building permit?
So, the idea here is that the concerns, of course, that we've heard from the folks about construction noise?
Which one? D.
Are also about the amount of vehicles that are on various properties. And just a couple of weeks ago, there was a construction site where they were blocking access along the road. Hardly one car was able to pass through. So, this allows the building inspector to say if there, if there's no parking that's available, and, and if there were to be construction vehicles, they would block access. This gives the chief building inspector the ability to say, okay, maybe we could find a location where they can park or provide parking on-site to make sure that there is access for not only the construction workers to park on-site, but also leaving access for traveling vehicles.
Because a lot of the contractors, they'll bus the people in, or they'll make, like if it's in the Village of Southampton, they'll run space at the beaches, and they'll bus the people over, or car pull them over. But some contractors, they just block the whole road up and down. The neighbors complain.
I understand the concern, because you want consistency in those determinations. I think because it's going to one person, it's not letting all inspectors, the chief building inspector is the one that has to do it, and he does have to take into consideration unique circumstances with each application that may be occurring, because those are going to change from, you know, site to site, depending on what the road configuration is, what the residential area is, you know. So, I, your concern is definitely appreciated, because I think consistency is what you're worried about. But they need to be consistent, and it is going to one person.
I just think if it's a parking issue, we should put something in here about parking on job sites. I just, this is very-
You may want to do that.
This is just very, I mean, I'm happy to have a public hearing on it and hear from the public on it. I just, to me, this is very open-ended as to, like, it just gives him the authority to shut down work on any permitted projects at his discretion for pretty much any reason.
No, 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 this doesn't, this does not give him authority to shut down work. This gives-
He may restrict times, which is in fact-
No, no, this gives him authority to restrict the number of, of vehicles on-site.
It says the chief building inspector may restrict times that work may commence within a building permit at time of issuance in his discretion based upon size, scale, and anticipated interruption of quiet enjoyment of property on proposed projects where planned work is expected to occur for more than a 72-hour continuous period. To me, that says it's not defined to parking.
So, we could speak with Sean Cambridge, and, and we'll work to see if there's language that can be adjusted in this. Well, we should definitely have the public hearing, because I think-
I'm happy to hear from the public. I just, I just feel like that's too open.
If there's language that we have to include to make sure that that's designated properly, we can do that.
You have to just tighten it up a little bit.
Yeah.
You can do that.
Yeah. Tighten the language. Bill, are you good with that?
I'm, I'm fine with that. So, number, number 3, 50849, authorize purchase of miscellaneous highway construction with Rosemark Contract Inc. using the Suffolk County Contract.
Town Board Resolution ID 50892, co-sponsored with Councilman Iasili. Authorization of cost reimbursement waiver for the Galilee Church of God in Christ Violence Free Block Party, which was held on August 23rd, 2025, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Town Board Resolution ID 50893, co-sponsored with the Councilman Iasili. Authorization of cost reimbursement waiver for the Watermill Village Improvement Association Annual Car Show. It should say Sunday, which was held on September 6th, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Town Board Resolution ID 50894, co-sponsored with Councilman Iasili. Authorization of cost reimbursement waiver for the Hampton Bay Lions Club 14th Annual Over the Bridge 10K Run and 5K Run Walk. It should also say which was held on September 13th, 2025.
So, if I may be added to 892, 893, and 894, thank you. Town Board Resolution ID 50904, sponsored by the entire town board. Authorize the acquisition of 199 Dune Road in the Village of Quog and amend the C P F management and stewardship plan to include the property. Town Board Resolution ID 50910, sponsored, I'm sorry, Michael, by Michael and I. Authorize Supervisor to sign an agreement with Seesaw Learning Incorporated to provide software services to the town's youth bureau. Michael, thank you for bringing that forward.
No, no problem.
Town Board Resolution 50947, sponsored by Supervisor Moore. Recall and amend Resolution Number 2021-483. Road review application for Blue Sea Adventures LLC Suffolk Tax Map, 900, -18, -1, -17, situated at North Sea is accepted.
Town Board Resolution ID 50948, co-sponsored with Councilman Martel. Recall and amend Resolution 2025-1072 to extend expiration of zone change approval for the application entitled to preserve at South Country Road in order to correctly identify the subject parcels. This is purely to put the correct tax map numbers into the-
And just so the board knows, there'll be an 11th add-on, and it is going to be a resolution that's going to be amending a prior resolution just with respect to a check number for maintenance bond.
Thank you.
That ends our draft agenda.
Do, do we want, I know we have Ryan here. It's not 10:30 yet. Do we want to do liaison updates now, and then move into, it's up to you all?
Close enough. Okay.
Christine, the resolution will be coming from?
Nicole.
Nicole.
Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for coming.
Ryan, hand them over to me. I'll copy stamp them for you.
It's not in there, is what I mean.
You want it in there?
That's the, if that's the reason, parking constraint of the property.
I think I have some parking constraints.
This to me is, there's too many reasons why.
There's six.
You know why they really decide to restrict?
I get what you're saying. You want to take Maria's?
So, that, I mean, that's what I mean. It's not in there.
Is enough for everybody?
I think one was attached to Molly.
I gave, yeah, I sent it over electronically ahead of time to you.
So, Kim, being who she is, printed it out and attached it to the agenda.
I hope he does that with everything.
Leave you all to it. Our agenda-
Good morning, board. Thank you for having me.
Thanks for coming.
We've been a little busy this year. Normally, we would have done this presentation a little bit earlier in the year, but happy to be able to get to it earlier than ever, I guess. So, this is the annual code enforcement stats report, just kind of capturing the activity from rental permits to complaints and inspections and, you know, more quality of life issues throughout the town that code enforcement deals with on an annual basis. To go along with this, and just for reference, the, we've started putting fire marshal activity stats reports onto the website as well. So, anybody that wants to see that in terms of, you know, quantity of inspections and tent permits and special event permits and things like that, to, to kind of gauge activity on an annual basis, that's available on there. And as of today, this is posted to the website and is available for the public to be able to see. I just got confirmation from CRC that they put it up just before the, coming into the meeting today.
So, is there a window at the, when you first log on, or do we have to search?
So, when you go under, the, at the top of the page, if you go under the tab that says government, scroll down to see public safety, and underneath that, you will see emergency preparedness, fire marshals, code enforcement. You click on code enforcement. When that webpage comes up, on the left-hand side, there are, there's an option that says, like, annual statistics or something like that. It's a sub, it's a subweb page underneath the code enforcement page. So, anybody that wants to go on and see this, they can go on and access it. And we keep up their, the past reports as well. So, year over year, you can look at and make kind of comparisons, see, you know, volume increases, although I do show trends within each report for the last several years leading up to it anyway. But if you wanted to, as they start to fall off, because you can only get so much into a report, you'll still be able to access some of the historical records on there going back to about 2019, when I started putting these together and putting them up onto the website.
Thank you.
So, if we just go, you know, it's, it's only about 15 pages. So, we'll go through it kind of quickly and go page by page real fast. It's not, you know, a super lengthy report that page by page means we'll be here for hours. So, entry, the, the, the second page of this, or really kind of the opening introduction to what's going on inside this report, describes code enforcement division. They handle rental permitting in the town and associated inspections, S O S complaints in the town, as well as environmental complaints that come in through S O S or by way of, you know, different divisions in the town, highway issues in terms of right-of-way obstructions, curb cuts without permits. The highway department may identify them. It could come in through S O S, and then referrals are made over to our office on the enforcement aspect of things, oftentimes based on an affidavit from the environmental division, the highway department, planning, because they're the experts in evaluating many of these things. But then, to be able to write the tickets under the code, that gets referred over to code enforcement. So, also, building without permit issues, lighting issues, routine patrols of the areas that different offices are assigned to, enforcement of the noise ordinance, which also includes the leaf blower ordinance during the seasonal ban. As mentioned, kind of referenced above, but highway environmental issues, stop work orders for building without a permit, as well as other assigned duties. Many of our ordinance enforcement staff are also involved with the town's hazmat team. Many of them also start to pivot into like a storm response mode when we go into flooding and storm responses. So, there's, there's more to it than just, just the normal stuff that you might think of. Sorry for that. In terms of rental permitting statistics, you'll see in 2024, we processed and issued 1,923 rental permits in the town. If you look at that bar graph there, you'll see that it trends up and down. Our permits are biannual permits. So, it, it's not exactly in half, but we, we basically view it that, you know, half basically renew on one year and half renew on another year. As you see, you know, in, in 2020, there was a big jump from 19, pre-COVID, to kind of COVID, when we saw a lot of people come out. And then, many of those houses that didn't have permits before or got permits have preserved the permits. We also noticed during COVID, with a, a number of people coming out that didn't previously rent legally, that when they needed to demonstrate that they were legally renting for the purposes of, you know, beach access, all of a sudden, we saw an increase in permits, and they entered into the system legally. And so, now, they're on that renewal cycle, too. So, that's why you see that, I believe, the 24, you know, reflects a little more similarly to 22 and 20. That's on that two-year cycle of renewal. So, that's, that's, and, and I'll probably say it again at the end, but it's worth noting that in 2024, all of this stuff that I'm describing was done by eight people for the entire town, all right, for, for code enforcement. That was our staff. Thank you to the board for increasing it, and then we had somebody depart. So, we're, we're up one from last year. We should be up two. We're up one. We're working through that right now to try and fill the, the remaining space. But, that's a lot of work that's done by eight people, or for 2025, it's, it's nine people. We're hoping to get to 10. Obviously, this is still a lot of work even at 10. We also ran out of kind of desks and cars for people, too. So, in the future, maybe we'll see that number go up a little bit, but rather than kind of putting the cart before the horse, we've got to make sure we have the space and the vehicles and everything else to kind of go along with that.
I have a question for you.
Yeah.
On the rental permits, is it broken, broken down to summer and year-round rentals?
No. No. No, because there's no such thing in the town of Southampton. You either have a rental permit or you don't. Whether you rent seasonally, whether you rent full year, that's up to you, that's your, your own preference. We don't issue different permits for different type of rentals. You either have a rental permit or you don't. And then how you choose to engage in renting, whether it's on a shorter-term basis, meeting the 14-day minimum stay compliance, or whether it's on a full-year basis, that's your own prerogative. And you might pivot during the year. If you have a tenant that you think is full year and then they depart and an opportunity presents itself for some seasonal, you might. So it would be a little tough to track, even if we tried.
I knew that, but I wanted to, because a lot of people don't know.
No, I appreciate that. Certainly any dialogue as we go through this that like helps to clarify it so that people understand and whether or not the data exists or, or can exist, it's, that would be a tough thing to, to kind of track because asking people to declare at the outset what their intention was may not be what it ends up working out to be. So it would still be a little, a little tough to do. Rental permits by type is a breakdown between the type of rental that it is, whether it's a accessory dwelling unit or a full house rental, but also it breaks it down to the type of inspection that's conducted, whether it's our staff conducting the inspections or a certified application in which they utilize a licensed professional outside of the, the town staff, an architect, engineer, or licensed home inspector to conduct the inspection for them. So you'll see that of the 1,900 and change permits, 1,381 of those, we conducted the inspections on. They were, they were standard permits or, or this could also cover renewals in that process too. But we do inspections on, on renewals as well. So that's, that's the bulk of it, which means that our staff that goes out into the field are managing those permits. So on top of the, the daily, you know, kind of calls for service, there's 1,381 permits that were processed in there by those people too, over the course of last year.
So if you apply for a permit, you go there once or do you follow-up inspect?
It would be wonderful if we went there once and everything was perfect as it should be. But some, many times it's more than one inspection that's involved in it. If there is an issue at the property, a missing smoke detector, for example, we will have to do a follow-up inspection to confirm that that was corrected before we would issue the permit.
So once they get the permit, is there any more follow-up?
So once they get the permit, in that period, unless there are problems that are presented to us, typically no, there's no more follow-up for that rental period. Once they get into the renewal cycle, we do request periodic re-inspections to make sure that the conditions remain the same. If the property changes hands too, rental permits are non-transferable from one owner to another. They're not attached to the property, they're attached to the owner. So if the rental property changes hands, then the new owner would have to request a new rental permit, apply for a new rental permit, and there would be an inspection that would be generated as a result of that. Unless, in unique instances, the previous inspection was within the last couple of months and then the property changed hands again. Rather than put, you know, more of a hoop to jump through on that. If we did an inspection in May and the property somehow changed hands again in July, June, maybe it went from private ownership to an LLC status ownership, which technically counts as a change in ownership status. They would have to reapply because it's a different name, even if the principals of the LLC are the same people that were the private owners before that. I don't necessarily need to do a re-inspect 30 days or 60 days later, we were just in there. All right. And we've been doing a much better job of asking for periodic re-inspections in the renewal process. When we see that something hasn't had an inspection in four or six years or whatever it is, we're looking to just check on the status again, do a re-inspect. At which point the people have the option of either us doing that re-inspect or they can hire an outside licensed professional to do it. In terms of SOS statistics, the Southampton Online Solutions platform where people can submit requests for service or complaints. In 2024, we received 1,951 complaints through that. That does not capture, you know, complaints that are, are coming in through like the 911 system or the non-emergency line to the police department. And then dispatchers are sending it directly to enforcement staff out in the field. This is just through SOS. Of that, 106 of those 1,951 came from, they were highway or environmental complaints that in, in almost all cases, we ended up getting involved with.
Could I actually ask you a question about that? So I know that we made a change to the, the delivery of those submissions. You have to provide your name, can't submit anonymously, which I think was a good step. I, I was at the Hampton Bay CAC last night and there was a question about whether or not, now I haven't noticed this, but in the body where you provide the information, they said that it's limited on the number of characters you could provide. And I understand that when you receive submissions on SOS, one of the most important things is having the, the correct information like time. Do you know if that's, has that, is it limited on the, the number of characters you can type in that box?
I would have to confirm with GIS, Ross and James and the team over there to see if there's a limitation on it. But we've gotten some fairly lengthy.
Yeah, I've seen it.
I think one of the things that I would suggest to people is that they, you know, not to sound like a, an old TV line, but like stick to the facts, just the facts. Sometimes we get long narratives in there.
Right.
And commentaries oftentimes, they're, they're not so favorable in terms of the comments put in.
Yeah.
But if they, if, if you're reporting, you know, an overcrowding allegation that you believe that that's happening and it's on the basis of, you know, vehicles that you're seeing or garbage or something, you know, you don't necessarily have to do complete sentences, you, you don't necessarily have to like describe what's in the garbage.
Brief observation and timeframes.
Seven cars routinely at night.
And now that we need their actual information, they can also just put in there. I have a lot more information if you'd like to speak to me about it.
Yeah, they can do that too.
I just want to mention, it was something that was brought up, I think, because I know that the clarity of the information, enough information is important, because if there's not enough information provided in those submissions for, you know, code enforcement to go out and see what's really happening, they have to kind of close it out because there's not enough information.
Yeah, yeah, so you know, sometimes we'll get like, again, go back to like an overcrowding where the people will put in the complaint, you know, way too many people living here, I shouldn't have to see this. Well, that's, if there is a character limitation, that's soaking up a lot of it, right?
Right, right.
If you're observing eight to 10 and, you know, it's a two-bedroom house, then you, all you need to put down in there is, you know, eight to 10 people.
Yep.
You don't have to say like way too many or anything like that. The, the, what you're seeing and just kind of sticking to exactly what you're seeing is the more important thing for us to get on that.
Right, understood.
That's one of the things, we're, we're encouraging people to give us full reports, times, dates, you know, everything, so.
I'll check on the, the, the character limitation though too and see if there's a way to even potentially increase it a little bit. But even with that, I would, I would just recommend to people that they try and.
I mean, if it seems, if it seems, and I actually said that, you know, last night, I said, make sure that it's just sticking to the details. But I mean, if there is a, you know, a significant limitation, like maybe that can be adjusted possibly. But let me know what you find out, that's all.
Yep, not wrong.
Thank you.
I have another question too. Have you noticed in, in the different hamlets of the town, some have gone up and some have gone down? Or it's pretty much the same area, has the same problems?
We're going to get to those numbers in, in just a second. And you'll see some of the, like the trends here over year and things like that. And it's broken down.
Sorry, let me jump.
Yeah, no, it's, 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 it's definitely a good question. And the next page of the report, you'll see, and anybody that accesses it online will see the types of SOS complaints that come in each year. There are a few more options in the dropdowns online, but you know, in the case of say like building without a permit or something like that, it's phrased in different ways. Like illegal construction might be a dropdown option or something like that that comes up. I blended a few of those together where the category was basically the, the exact same thing, but just phrased differently to just try and consolidate the numbers a little bit. But we didn't lose any numbers in the case of that blending. They just kind of merged into one category. So it gives you a breakdown, you know, by the types. The next page with the, the bar graph shows you the top types of complaint by year. And if you look at, you know, 2024, these, these are pretty routinely like some of the top types of complaints that we see throughout the town, complaints and allegations of illegal renting, general property maintenance complaints, overcrowding complaints. What's categorized generally is housing issues, which is a very, very general category and can encompass a variety of different things. And then construction-related or illegal construction or building without permit type complaints. This breaks down kind of the top complaint categories. And you'll see that, you know, over the years, the numbers are relatively the same. Obviously you see, you know, in 2020 with COVID and some of the restrictions, some peaking out of certain numbers like construction-related complaints and things of that nature. And illegal renting you see peaks out in 2020 as a complaint that we saw as well, with 24 being, you know, down in some categories versus other years up in some categories. I think some of it may be more complaints, some of it may be more use of the system, knowledge and use of the system. It maybe doesn't necessarily mean that, that the problems are going up as much as the awareness and use of the system. This also doesn't effectively capture repetitive complaints. So sometimes we'll get an individual that's very upset about what they're seeing and they will put in the same complaint six or seven times in a row over the course of a minute or five minutes or 10 minutes or 10 days. So it, it, it's really the exact same complaint, it's cut and paste oftentimes and it's just put in time and time and time again. This does not filter out those types of scenarios where we get a repetitive complaint, six, seven, eight, 10 times in a row. And this happens where over five minutes, the same complaint will come in 10 times in a row from the same person. This doesn't discount that. It adds that into the total numbers and counts that where maybe we really should count it as one complaint. I don't want to, I want to mention that because as we get into the, the hamlet breaks, breaks down and things like that, I don't want it to necessarily look like more problems in a place when it, it may be one problem that's repeatedly mentioned, you know.
So before we move on, just the debris dumping and the debris dumping litter complaints, are they?
Yes, I should have merged those.
Are they in the chart? Where are they in the chart?
In the, the bar graph?
Yeah.
They're not.
Okay. And what about leaf blower complaints?
They're not in there because it's not, it's, it's, they didn't fall into a top complaint category versus some of the other ones. But the, I mean, the numbers are captured in the types of complaint.
Right, it's just growing concerns that people give us. So I didn't want to see the numbers skewed, you know, over the last five years, okay.
Yes, and particularly like with leaf blowers, you know, that's a lot, that's a lot of repetitive complaints in there where it's the same house, the same property. And over time, and so like this year, we did some outreach to that and there were a few streets in Hampton Bays where I believe we've seen decreases in the quantity based on going out and flyering and providing information about the, the leaf blower restrictions. So I'm, I'm hoping that 25, you know, in some of those streets, we might be able to see. So we may be able to take a deeper dive between 24 and 25 on like leaf blower complaints, for example, to see if some of the outreach from this year was effective and we saw decreases in the complaints off of that street.
But do you, but do you also document complaints that are made out of the season when it's not even applicable?
Oh, yeah.
So there's, those are documented in there too. So we would have to kind of cycle out when it was an actual timeframe that it's.
Yes. Yes, and, and even if we determine that something is unfounded perhaps, where, you know, maybe the complainant thinks that it's an electric leaf blower, a gas leaf blower that's being used, but it's actually an electric leaf blower that's being used, so it's compliant. That complaint, that complainant may put the same thing in like 10, 20 more times because they still don't want to hear it. Whether it's gas or electric, they just don't want to hear it. So there'll never be a hundred percent way to like rule out some of the statistical aberrations that occur in here, but.
I would definitely like, I would definitely like to see the trends if, you know, based on the outreach that we've doing at some point next year.
I'm curious to see the 24 versus 25 in particular. The next page breaks down complaints by location, by hamlet and village. And of course, also included in there is when the location is unspecified or doesn't fall into our jurisdiction in some cases. That's the, the null category at the top of it.
I thought that was a new hamlet.
You know, you didn't get a new hamlet. And.
Now we get complaints from the villages, but we don't respond?
We'll forward them, we'll forward those complaints over to the village in, in many cases. And then depending on what the nature of the complaint is, we may still, some of the villages we do, like Sagaponic, we provide service to. There are some of the villages we provide fire marshal services to. So there may still be a, a possible response on some of them, depending on the village. So the first page is 2019 to present, then 2024 is on the next page. Lot lower numbers, little less panic versus the cumulative numbers that are on that first page. And then we go to top locations by year on the page after that.
Hampton Bays.
Routinely the top. Does that mean there's more problems? Does that mean that there's more population, so proportionally speaking? Like I, there's, there's other things that have to, I think, get factored in there.
But these are, but this one too, this is SOS, this is not called in complaints. These are not complaints that are called into our office that we forward to you.
Correct.
Because I mean, I'll sit down with, you know, people from Flanders and I'll, I'll personally hand you a page of complaints that we, that we respond to and address outside of this.
This is just based off the SOS system.
So this is not from interdepartmental?
No.
Okay.
No, this is just based off the SOS system. So when my office takes in complaints.
So that's all on top of this.
We will pretty routinely, my staff will pretty routinely enter those complaints into the SOS system on call-ins so that we can track it. But when we get things interdepartmentally, when we get things through the police 911 or non-emergency line that are dispatched directly to officers in the field, that's not captured in the statistics.
So when those complaints come into our office or from us, we should realistically be putting them into SOS, just so there's a record.
Putting them into the SOS system would help with the tracking. And, and if the person wants to re-contact, you know, getting the information in there or if it's, you know, staff from your office or one of you that's putting them in and you want to put in your own email address so that you get the notification of any updates to it, so that if the complainant calls back, you'll have information to share with them too. It, it's certainly helpful for statistics, sometimes it happens, sometimes it doesn't. Sometimes a walk-up person comes up to you in the parking lot or at a meeting and then you just, you know, get that information over to, to me or somebody on staff as soon as possible. It just, the important thing is that somebody's getting out there to go and try and deal with it, not necessarily, you know, it's great if we can track it on, on the SOS stats, but I think the more important thing is that it's getting addressed. So however we get that done. So just some, some commentary on it in, in 2024, from January 1st to December 34th, there were, December 31st, there was a total of 2,443 SOSs that came in to the town system in total. All departments, town board, municipal work, parks, everything, lighting, you know, street light that needs to be fixed that can be reported through SOS, 2,443 complaints in total. Of that total number, as you can see, the majority of them came into code enforcement. 1,845 of those complaints plus the other 106 complaints that are associated with highway and environmental that we often go out and do the enforcement for. So the bulk of the SOS use for the town of Southampton is through code enforcement and, you know, reporting of quality of life issues. The majority of the, the complaints that come in are responded to by our nine full-time currently, now nine full-time. In 2024, it would have been eight full-time code enforcement officers for the town. So that's a, that's a lot of work being done by, by those people. You know, that's, that's our full-time staff, you know, seasonally, we, those, those same staff people are working overtime on Friday and Saturday nights going out and covering. We're not, you know, up-staffing with more people.
And can you just talk about the hours of the code enforcement officers per day? Just, I think there, there have been questions about how, how long are they working for?
No, I'm very happy to mention that because when I started here with the town, code enforcement was on five days a week. And then seasonally in the summertime, from basically Memorial Day to Labor Day, Friday, Saturday night shifts to assist with noise and party house type situations and things like that with the police. At this point in time, code enforcement is on seven days a week. Monday through Friday, typically the hours are the first staff people are coming in around 6:30 in the morning and the last staff people are leaving at about 6 o'clock at night. So we have Monday through Friday, basically half the the day covered. We have 12 hours of a day covered with these people. Saturday and Sunday, they're typically in from around 8 till 4. During the, during the, those that are on during the day, there are three people on during the day on Saturday, two people on during the day on Sunday. And then on Friday and Saturday nights during the season, the second set of people come in for the overtime night shift that is checking for the noise and things like that. They're on from 4:00 PM till 12:00. So really I have from 8 to 4 with the day shift and then from 4 to 12. So we're basically covered from 8:00 AM until 12:00 AM. On Saturdays, Fridays, you're really covered from like 6:30 AM until 12:00 AM on a Friday during the summertime. So we've expanded coverage and and you would work with me on that back when, when you were my liaison too. And we expanded to six days a week and now we've hit seven days a week. We've expanded coverage a lot and we cover a lot of the hours of the day.
Ryan, are there any adjustments made for the summertime or now it's just the same schedule?
It's the same schedule, just the, the, the Friday, Saturday night adjustments.
Okay.
Is there an appetite in the summer for overnight crew? How would that work? I mean, you're not going to send one guy to the door for a complaint. You're going to need police backup, like. Whole nother industry, I think.
Code enforcement are not peace officers in the state of New York. They have no arrest, detention powers, anything like that. We put them in a ballistic vest when they go out at night for their own protection. They have no defensive, you know, training or anything like that in terms of, you know, use of force. You, you start to cross that threshold after 12:00 AM and.
Dangerous.
It starts to become, you get to that, that bewitching hour. And I think it really honestly gets to be a little bit more dangerous and you have a little bit more of a liability after that point. And if you're going to simply pair them up with a, a police officer anyway at that point, like it probably could just be handled through the PD response. Now that said, we do have occasions where we, we coordinate with the police. If there's something that we need to target in an area, something we need to look at, where we will hold people over and keep them on longer. If we know there's a suspected, you know, party that's going to be occurring or something like that, we want to have them on for noise metering, we'll make those arrangements ahead of time and coordinate that with the police.
And you've also done blitzes where you send them out in pairs because it's, you know.
Yes, yes, without a doubt. We could put people on on the, but we, thankfully, we also have a fantastic relationship with the police department here. The relationship that occurs between code enforcement and fire marshals with the police in the five eastern townships, I think, is a completely different dynamic than the relationship between the individual five townships in the West and the, the overall Suffolk County Police Department. Because we're under the same umbrella of the town, we have a really good relationship. So if we get a complaint in a, in a neighborhood about like excessive vehicles or something like that and I don't have somebody on to check at one or two o'clock in the morning, I will reach out to Lieutenant Spencer or Lieutenant Schottenhamel or, you know, speak to the chief directly and see if patrol that's on the overnight can go past that house and do an observation. And then they will send us like an excessive vehicles affidavit as to what they witnessed on the property.
And we also did, we also paired up really well over the summer where we actually did enforcement in some neighborhoods. We had some, several complaints about too many vehicles parked, you know, on the road. And so we paired with PD and PD went out for a few nights which got them off of the roads, but then they were in the yards and then code enforcement got them during the day.
That's a fun back and forth, right? The, the too many vehicles on the roadway, they'll, they'll get tickets from TCOs or the police and then they'll move the vehicle off the property, then it enters my world and then they'll get tickets for excessive vehicles on the property or on the front lawn. And it turns into, finally, the message tends to get through.
It's just an example of how you guys do work together really well.
Exceptionally.
That's great. You know, the public needs to know that there is some, at least eyes on what's going on.
Yes. Without code, we still have ways through the, through the cooperation with the police department to see some of these things at night and and check on them. Does it happen day of? Not necessarily. It might take a couple of days or whatever it is. Patrol will work it into their schedule and and most of these observations can't just be done one and done. It has to be like a recurring condition that we can document is actually a problem. Otherwise, for example, excessive vehicles, which also often comes up as a, as a complaint. People are allowed to have house guests. You know, it's about the permanent occupancy of the house, right? You don't really want to be knocking on a door on, on a, on a Tuesday morning or something like that with, because we observed, you know, eight cars on a property on a, on a Monday and you find out that, well, I mean, the cars are all there because there's somebody in the house that passed away or something like that and family came in from out of town and there's a.
Or somebody's getting married.
Right. So there are legitimate rational reasons why somebody might have some excessive vehicles for a day or two. It's, is that condition occurring over weeks on end? Is it occurring over months on end? Whatever the case may be, we have to build that up, so. SOS statistics, they, they, just kind of a continuation of the, the comments. Highest area of leaf blower complaints were Hampton Bays, West Hampton was next, North Sea was underneath that. But you'll see it's a, it's a huge drop off, right? So 62 complaints in Hampton Bays area, 25 in West Hampton. And then the third highest one was nine in North Sea. After that, it's, it's, it's single digits in other Hamlets. So the complaint areas for that are relatively isolated, which is why we did some of that targeted outreach to some of those high volume streets.
Houses close together.
Yes, yes. Highest complaint types in Bridge Hampton. The other category had 32 complaints, signage had 17, outdoor lighting had 14 complaints, North Sea 56 complaints and that other just general category, 31 illegal rental complaints and then.
This is 24, 2024.
This is 2024. Yes, I think we had seen some increases there if I went back to the Hamlet stats. And that's why I, I mentioned them as just some side commentary there.
On the signage, we're getting a lot of complaints about just the signs being nailed on the pole for contractors up west and all that. What do we do about that?
We rip them down, we issue notices of violation, potentially issue summonses if we can get it that far. We, we, when we take them down, we always, we also normally, so we first contact them and tell them to remove them. If they're not removed within a day or two, we'll start to take them down. We'll normally call them again and say, hey, you're, you're paying for these signs, you're losing them, they're going in the garbage. Hoping that that will be a motivator. If we continue to see them, we issue notices of violation and and or tickets as necessary.
Right. Because I know, you know, I've called you a few times and you do like a little sweep in a Hamlet and try to get as many of them down and they're back in a few days to.
Yep. Yeah, it's a constant battle.
Right.
Some of, sometimes it's the same people, sometimes we pull one for one business, somebody else sticks a different sign up there. It's, it's an ongoing thing. And I know the police deal with it too. You know, they get, they get a lot of complaints about it and I think they make an effort to try and reach out to these people and get the signs removed as well. I know, like I met with Hampton Bays Beautification the other day. I know as a group, they go out and remove some of these signs too. And I appreciate the extra help there and, you know, attending to that. It's a, it's a constant battle.
So does let a crew grab them as they drive around or?
He's an animal when it comes to that. Yes, without a doubt. Whenever we have a removal of, of signs from right of ways, you know, competition, friendly competition within the office, Dave normally sweeps the field, so. Yes. And he'll make a lot of the calls himself to people as he's seeing them. He'll call them, tell them to remove the signs, friendly outreach. When he, when he removes them, he'll call them, he'll tell them he's referring it over to code enforcement for violations to be issued, so on and so forth.
Right.
So he, he doesn't just remove them, he actively, you know, dialogues with these people too. Enforcement, voluntary compliance is our number one goal, as it always has been. We prefer not to have to write tickets to people, it just gets tied up in court after that point. We really try and educate folks, tell them what the code is. Despite how many years I've been doing this, I try not to be too jaded with it. I'd like to think that most people don't intentionally violate the code, that they just don't know what the rules are. And we try and educate people if we continue to see the behavior after that. Of course, there needs to be punitive measures that are taken.
Can I ask a question about that? And I think this is just again, coming from the public that asks, you know, with respect to voluntary compliance, how many times would you say, and I guess every case is different, right? You have to deal with it on a case by case basis and I assume that's going to be the answer. But if you could just approximate, like, you know, when somebody is not in compliant and then they're not in compliant again, when are you, when do you start issuing tickets typically?
Typically, it's like two times.
Okay.
If there's zero.
Strike three, strike three, you're out.
Zero effort, two times. We try to shorten those compliance periods, right? So notice of violation issued, typically we try and give, depending on what the nature of the violation is, it could be correctable immediately. It could be correctable 14 days, it could be correctable 30 days.
Of course, depending on the issue.
Any charge against the state code unless it's imminent threat to life and safety has to be given 30 days notice. We don't typically write against that, we typically write against the town code. So we can give 14 days, we can shrink that, that time period. We will typically give a second notice of violation. Which is just a warning, there's no fine at that point.
Right.
If there's zero effort to correct after that period has elapsed, it goes to a ticket.
Got it.
Depend, and this, again, these are not rules, right? Depending on the nature of it, it might be one and then ticket. Typically, it's, we try and do two and then ticket. But depending on the nature of it, you don't want to keep allowing that condition to exist. If somebody's clearing wetlands.
Yeah.
You're going to get one notice of violation and if you clear anymore or don't stop or don't start to correct or don't file the applications necessary in the period, you're going to get a ticket.
Yeah.
We need to make sure that we check the box, that we're taking an action on that.
That's very helpful. I think people want to know like what's the process and I think.
If somebody's partially correcting, they have, it's a property that's just fallen apart.
It's a step.
And they start to move in the right direction. We would rather work with them for two, three, four, six months, slowly making progress towards seeing that property correct itself than issue a ticket and 18 months later, we're still going through the court process with it.
Yeah. No, I think that information is helpful because you want to know what the mindset is of code enforcement when they, and of course, all of the, all of these issues are different, but I think that's very helpful information.
I just want to say a perfect example of this is what I did with you in Hampton Bays where we were getting a lot of complaints about signs on storefronts. And rather than going out and issuing notice of violations to those business owners, what we did was we gave them letters that they were not in compliance and we gave them a window of time to come in and meet with us and we sat down with them. We had, we had a, an interpreter with us. And in, in most cases, it was just they did not understand what the code was or they weren't aware. And I would say what, like 90% of those businesses voluntarily came into compliance?
Oh, yeah.
Within 24 to 48 hours?
I think we only really ended up having to write tickets to maybe two or three places in town.
Which is, which is why I'm working with Ryan now. We're going to do a, a, a handout for businesses on, you know, property maintenance and also on signage and things of that. The things that we get a lot of code complaints about that are, you know, redundant and it happened over and over so that, you know, we'll put it in English, we'll put it in Spanish. We can give it to the chambers and they can give it to new businesses in town. It gives them a way to introduce themselves to the new businesses. And also, you know, we can give it on change of tenancy so that the new business owner knows.
We're working on that on, on the commercial and business side. We're working on some stuff on the residential side with this whole concept of just trying to educate.
Yeah.
Whether it's a private residence or, or, or commercial member of the public as to what the regulations are because a lot of people just don't know.
Yes, I, Cindy's absolutely right. I mean, I think it's a, it's an educational, I think, component to it. And the PSAs that we've been doing and, and also working with the Sustainability Committee, which I really appreciate your work on, and also the Dark Skies Committee. All of that has to do with just trying to raise that awareness and, yes.
So Ryan, on, on a commercial aspect of it, you know, businesses that still are selling helium balloons that you've talked to several times and are still doing it, how do you react to that?
We have to witness the sale in order to be able to write it. So we've had very few tickets for, for those types of things. And it's the same kind of problem that we end up with, with even like the leaf blowers. The regulation has been in place for a while now, but in order to write a charge on it, we have to witness the use. And particularly, you know, in season, that use tends to be like the last 10 minutes of the job. We have to witness the sale of that, that balloon, you know, that, that helium lighter than air filled balloon, you know, however we decide to phrase it in the code.
Don't most establishments have like, for helium, they have like a tank that they fill them up with?
Right, but the presence of a tank is not enough to write a charge.
Or a customer walking out the door with a big bouquet of balloons.
If we saw somebody leaving the premises with that, like then we would likely have enough to work with to actually issue the charge. We don't necessarily have to see a, a cash handed over a counter necessarily. The fact that, we have to be able to articulate it, right? Did we see the tank in the, in the building? Did we see the balloons in the building? Do we see the person walking out of the building with those balloons filled up, you know, like? But we need to be able to observe that. It's, it's a, a challenge so that we can actually have that charge, you know, stand up in court. The same thing, like, again, I'll just make the comparison like with like the leaf blowers. You could have a leaf blower on your back, you could tell me you're training for the leaf blower 5K. If I didn't witness you actually running that leaf blower, I didn't witness a crime. I didn't witness a violation of the code there. So just having it present doesn't make it enough to say this is a problem. Because you could have balloons and a helium tank present in a store and you could send that off to a site outside of the town of Southampton and have that filled up on site, you know?
Is it against the code to give them to somebody? I'm just.
You can't, you can't fill, I, I'd have to go back and look at the exact language of the code.
I don't believe there's like a possession of balloon paraphernalia.
Because you can't, you start to deal with commerce laws at that point. Like you can't, there's nothing that says you can't traverse through the town of Southampton, you know, buy them in Brookhaven, traverse through Southampton.
Well, listen, I mean, ever since that code went into effect, now everybody has helium tanks in their garage.
Well, and remember, our laws, our regulations with regards that are not necessarily the regulations of the villages within the unincorporated portion of, you know, that are surrounded by the unincorporated portion of the town of Southampton. So, you know, having it and then like going into, I don't know what Southampton Village's regulation is with regards to, you know, lighter than air filled balloons, you might be able to have it there, so.
You can have them delivered.
There's a lot of, you know.
It's kind of like the intentional release part of that code as well.
Yeah, it's, it, there's a lot of uniquenesses to it that we have to meet all that burden in order for it to stick.
So I hope I don't go too far off course here, but derelict commercial properties, those that we see that have been vacant for many, many years, they obviously look like they're falling in on themselves. Like what kind of recourse do we have?
Well, what we, we would do tickets on them, we would use violations and tickets. And then if anything, we could go to enforcement actions from there. We, we successfully accomplished, not on a commercial, but on a residential property, one enforcement action this year, I say successfully accomplished it. A little dissatisfied with the performance of the contract vendor for it. What should have really been done in one day was dragged out over about four days, which is why we're now reevaluating our, our contracts with that because enforcement actions are not, you know, home renovation projects. They can't be done over a prolonged period of time. They need to be done quickly and effectively and, you know, really one day in and out, all done. So we could do enforcement actions if it's, if it's like a safety issue. There's one that you, I believe you and I have been on some communications on recently that we have concerns about structurally that the building department's also evaluated. I think that that should lead to some conversations between us and, and the town attorney's office about options for, you know, condemnation if it's, you know, existing for too long. It's a lengthy and very prescribed process that has to be gone through for, for condemnation to achieve that. But it's, it's certainly the highest option that we could consider in a case like that. On the, just the violations and summonses page, it's just worth noting that, you know, this is field, this counts field appearance tickets. A field appearance ticket may represent multiple charges. So, you know, in certain cases, one of the commercial locations in Hampton Bays that we were dealing with a lot last year on Montauk Highway, each field appearance ticket that was issued might have represented 20 or 30 separate individual charges. So this is field appearance tickets, not necessarily charges. And then each one of those charges has to have work that's associated with it. So just for, for your own reference, if staff writes 20 charges to a property, they go, they write a field appearance ticket because they observe a variety of violations, I basically am losing that person in the field, you know, for the good portion of the next day or one of the subsequent days to sit down and do all of the paperwork that has to be done for those 20 charges that then have to go to court. that has to be done for those twenty charges that then have to go to court. So there's a, there's a huge burden there that we have to fulfill in terms of the paperwork, the discovery compliance paperwork, to be ready for court for the prosecution of those charges once they go in. So, um, just kind of another issue that we, we face in terms of that quan, the quantity of staff and, and pulling them out of the field and the follow-up work that's associated with the ticket. It's not just a ticket and the person goes off to court and we're done. There's all sorts of paperwork that has to go into that after the fact. And if you have twenty charges but multiple owners, each one of those owners on the property, even say, for example, a residential, but it's, the property is deeded under both the husband and wife. There should be two of each one of those tickets, one to the husband and one to the wife. So twenty charges becomes forty charges that have to have packets prepared for them, each one of those charges before it goes to court. All right? Twenty twenty-four just changes, uh, and that's the, the, the last page of the report. And I'm sorry it took this long, I, I should go faster. It covers the fact that we are available seven days a week. That was a change that occurred in twenty twenty-four. Before that, we were at six days. We've added the seventh day scheduling. Friday and Saturday night coverage still remains. We've still been working with shortened compliance periods to try and keep things moving along and not get lost, those thirty-day compliance periods. A lot of times, other things come up on the schedule and then checking doesn't occur necessarily on day thirty-one. All of a sudden, that turns into day forty, forty-five, fifty, whatever it is. So we're trying to keep it on the radar and the follow-up to occur more regularly and faster. We continue to coordinate with, uh, the troopers. Fabio's been a, a big asset to us in the hour area, um, as well as, uh, Southampton Parks Department to try and hold dumping and littering offenders accountable whenever we can identify who the person is, either based on the waste that's been dumped. A lot of times, they're kind enough to leave us packages with their names all over them. So it makes it nice and easy to identify who they are. Or if we can get a plate off of it, we will work on identifying who the operator of the vehicle is. I know Kristen's got a routine dumper that she's dealing with now at one of her locations, I believe in Hampton Bays, where we've got great video. I just haven't been able to pull a plate off of it yet. They actually look like they're painters or spacklers or something like that based on their outfits. So if you're listening, stop dumping at the garbage can. Uh, we've attempted to increase the use of, uh, enforcement actions. As I mentioned, we've hit a couple of stumbling blocks with that this year, but hopefully we can course correct and get back on it. We continue to coordinate with the police. They're a fantastic partner to us in terms of response to complaints. The police department also added, um, they purchased noise meters for all of their sector cars, uh, for this year. That was a purchase they did at the end of last year. We've also trained all of their officers in the use of the noise meters in the same way that we use them in code enforcement. That, the fact that the police in Southampton Town and code enforcement get along well enough that they'll, they're open to the idea of someone with, you know, less police officer, peace officer status than then them coming in and talking to them about how we use these meters, shows that, that, that mutual level of respect that exists between the two worlds in, in Southampton. And that's really a valuable thing that I think we should champion. New sector assignments, we changed where we were putting people as of, I, that actually should say May twenty twenty-five. We just made that change this year, I apologize for that. And we're successfully utilizing more outreach to address, um, alleged light, lighting violations. We've still seen a lot of success by just calling people. A lot of neighbors don't talk anymore. And, um, they reach out to us when there's a lighting issue. We will find a number if there is one on file from a recent permit application or something like that and just call them. A lot of times, these issues are being corrected before we ever even have to go and issue a notice of violation.
The people don't realize it.
Yeah.
So what you don't have in there is the, uh, your efforts to be bilingual, to make sure that everybody understands, you know, the language firsthand. The interpreters are nice. But when you have, you know, a code enforcement agent that actually lived in an area, speaks the language, it's a lot more effective.
We had two people in the entire Department of Public Safety and Emergency Management when I started that, um, had Spanish-English capability, bilingual capability. And, um, we currently have, uh, five, so more than double. And that's three, uh, field staff members, Spanish-speaking ordinance inspectors. And then we also have, uh, two office staff members that are also, um, qualified. And we put them all through language lines assessments so that they are actual, you know, certified for translation.
Good, that's great.
Yeah.
And also I want to thank you for bringing us up, for changing, um, regulations. You see something, what needs to be changed, that's really important.
Thank you. Thanks for being willing to entertain some of those changes.
We have a few more.
Yes, there'll always be more.
Over this garbage can, I have a couple more people brought up.
Okay.
We'll discuss later.
All right.
You know, we say it once in a while too, you're not here all the time. But face to face, you know, your, uh, efforts in the emergency management of Southampton Town and your efforts across the East End, uh, very commendable, so thank you for that.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, have a good day.
Thank you.
All right, so we're going to lead into the, uh, the supervisor, town council member liaison updates. Do you want to start on your side or do?
Sure. Um, on, I would say Monday, uh, Councilman Martell and I attended the Flanders CAC Riverside, North Hampton CAC meeting. Legislator Stark was there, which is nice, she actually attends quite regularly. And it's really nice to be able to have that dialogue between town and county and the actual hamlet all at one table. And it, and it, we, I think, you know, we came up with some, you know, things that we are looking into on, on several fronts versus traffic and, um, and, and, and a, and a bunch of things that we had talked about. And, and it was nice to have her there because it was, you know, we have that partnership with the county there and it is, you know, between the circle with traffic. And, you know, we've had conversations about potentially bringing Riverhead into the conversation there because that Riverside traffic circle really backs up when the Riverhead light doesn't work. And I know that the Riverhead Town has in the past, at least during rush hour, put officers there to keep that intersection flowing. So it's something we're going to discuss again.
Please let me know how I can be helpful.
Okay.
If any.
The Maritime Park too, Catherine is working on assisting us in making some of the changes that the community would like to see. So I think she's going to be a big help for Riverside, North Hampton.
Yeah. And then, um, I just drew a complete blank.
I'm sorry.
Thursday night was snow? I mean, there's been stuff every single night, but, oh, uh, we've also met with the Bridgehampton Civic on some issues regarding Scott Cameron. We're going to look into some things there. That was a productive meeting with our Parks Department. I want to take the opportunity, you know, at the end of the season, to thank Kristin Dulose and John Irwin for all of the work that they do. Um, people don't understand the enormity of the, of the work that they do. You know, just the, just the, the garbage pickup from, you know, one end of the township to the other at all of the facilities, the beaches, the road ends, the town facilities. It's an immense job and the fact that they get it done weekend and week out. I mean, we've had some conversations with, you know, there being some lapses towards the end of the season as we lose staffing to, you know, kids going back to college and teachers going back to work. They were helpful in, in having conversations with us on how they could proactively help us find help that would be available in the off-season. We're having the same conversations, um, in Flanders and Riverside. As far as Wildwood, we said to them, you know, if you know somebody that's, you know, looking for work or, or might be interested in doing this, send them our way and we're happy to talk to them. And, you know, it's really getting the community involved in, in doing those staffing, uh, requirements that are, that need to be met. But Kristen really does, I mean, an immense job doing the entire township and all of our beaches and parks. And, you know, we, we continually buy CPF properties and we don't understand that the maintenance of those properties falls on the Parks Department. And they do it and they take it on and they don't complain and, you know, they do a tremendous amount of work. So I just want to give them a big thank you.
Thank you. Bill?
Let's see, um, about twenty years ago, um, for having, I started a project that I, um, on Lake Agwam. At the, at the end, he had a rebulk head and had a, um, swale put in and never finished the project, was never enough funded to finish the project. And I tried to get funded and I re, re-did the project, redesigned it because times have changed. And I could never get it done all the way. And then Scott, President Scott Horowitz, um, he picked it up after I left. And we got it over the hill and they broke ground on it on Monday.
That's great.
With water quality funding, it's about eight hundred thousand dollars funded to redo that parking lot, make it porous so the water does not go into, um, into Lake Agwam and also-
Semi, uh, semi-permeable paver?
Yes, and, and some swales and also improves the, the traffic flow down there, make it safer. I went to North Sea CAC the other night and we, um, one of the neighbors on Majors and Mary's and Straight Path were complaining about that three corners there. And I spoke to the superintendent of Highway and McLean. They're going down there to look at it, see how they can make it safer or maybe a better turn and, or do something about it. And also at North Sea was iconic extra, talking about the IU system, the new septic systems.
Yeah.
How you get grants and, you know, try to encourage people to do that. Even commercial properties like condominiums, I brought up, as they can get water quality funding for that. Like we did in a couple of units in West Hampton condominiums. There's a lot of condominiums, well, both years ago, on the water, which should be upgraded. We encourage them to do it. So that, you know, you have neighbors or friends who live in it, you should, you know, encourage them to go to the board and look into it.
That's great.
Thank you.
Rick?
So I just want to remind everybody that this Saturday, September twentieth, the Anti-Bias Task Force picnic, uh, from one to five at Red Creek Park. Uh, if you've never been before, it's a great event. They have, uh, music, food, uh, local community outreach booths. It's just a fun time, it's free, come down and have a good time. I'm sorry that Ryan left so quickly, but I'd really like to throw out some thank yous. You know, the San Gennaro Feast has been going on for thirteen years now. And, uh, events like that and Hampton Classic really wouldn't happen without the benefit of the town, you know, working with the community members to make these successful. So I want to thank, in addition to our town board, Ryan Murphy and Tara Farrell, all the fire marshals. The fire marshals actually have a booth and, uh, they come in, they hand out, they hand out coloring books, they talk to the kids. I mean, I think they have a lot of fun at it. Latoya Booker and Kristin Dulose from Parks that help us out greatly. Charlie McCardle, Mark Brager and the Highway Department are there day and night to help us with the safety aspect of it. Uh, we do lock down the road and between them and the police, they make it very safe for our attendees. So a big thank you to everyone there.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
So I, I just have a couple of things. Was at the Hampton Bay CAC last, last night, a couple of public safety code enforcement matters. So this is actually, this presentation was very helpful and pertinent. I want to mention just a couple of things that are, uh, going to be happening. The, uh, Town Youth Bureau is doing today a GSA advisor training workshop at the Hampton Bay Community Center at three thirty. It's really just to try to bring some of our, our school advocacy groups together to talk about, uh, you know, LGBT, the LGBTQ plus community and some of the issues that they face. I have to really, uh, praise Hampton Bay School District, who has played such a, uh, integral role and stepped up big time, uh, to really help get this thing off the ground. So I really want to, um, thank the folks, uh, with the Hampton Bay School District.
I assume you're going, I'll be there later today.
I'll be there and I want to thank you, Rick, too, for your partnership on this. It's a really great effort, uh, teaming up with the Youth Bureau and the LGBT Network. I do also want to mention that on Saturday, October eleventh, there's going to be, um, the annual celebration, the twenty-sixth annual celebration of the Long Pond Green Belt at SOFO. It's free and fun for the whole family, so, uh, please, uh, it's at ten AM. Uh, if you have time, definitely go and enjoy, enjoy nature. And I also want to mention again, September thirtieth is our pet vaccination and, and licensing day, where you can get a free rabies vaccine if you need it for your, for your dog and, and some, um, a license as well to help us with ma, making sure and ensuring the safety of our pets and our neighbors. And that's at twelve o'clock here at Town Hall, rain or shine.
I'll bring my dog.
Great. Thank you, everyone. Did you want to?
At this time, I would like to close a work session and go to executive session for personnel only.
Second.
Anyone else have anything else?
Good job.
Thank you.